There we go. Thank you, David, very much. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, October 22, and a couple of housekeeping items. We are recording the meeting, and we are also live streaming today's meeting. Also, would request if you have a cell phone, if you'd please put it on vibrate or silent. Appreciate that courtesy. We always begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Finasco, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Voebler?
Here. We have a quorum. We always, during our meetings, have two opportunities for public comment. One in just a moment or two, and then one before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times, or just one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen. That's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters, and if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes or so, we'd appreciate that courtesy. We also set aside time for row officer reports. Row officers are not required to be at these meetings, but if they happen to be here, we always allow them time to speak, but today, none of our row officers are with us. So that takes us to public comment, and I'll open the floor and see if anybody has any questions or concerns at this time. Nothing, Debbie? I'll have your materials for you when we wrap up. Sure. Hearing no public comment, we'll move on. Under fiscal and contractual in our packets, and they're here if anybody wishes to see them. We have the warrant registers from the county comptroller's office. They are dated October 15, 16, and 17 of this year. To my two colleagues, gentlemen, please take your time, look them over, and then whenever you're ready, we could take a motion to accept these reports. I'll make the motion. They accept the reports.
I'll second that motion.
Gentlemen, thank you both. Do either of you have any questions about the warrant registers?
No.
If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Also in our packet are the minutes of the October 15, 2024 Commissioners' Meeting. And once again, to my two colleagues, gentlemen, please take time to look them over, and whenever you're ready, I can entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to accept the request.
I'll check. Thank you both. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes? If not, I'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under correspondence, we have one document that has been submitted to the Commissioners that will enter into the record dated September 25 of 2024, received by the Planning Office on October 2. It is from Apex Company, which is an engineering and surveying company out of Greensburg, Pennsylvania. And the correspondence advises us that the applicant that Apex is representing is AmeriCole Aggregates of Butler. The project name is, I hope I pronounced this right. Amy, help me. Is it Moshapan? Moscapan?
I think it's Moscapan.
Moscapan. Thank you. It's the Moscapan North Mine. This is a proposed surface quarry, and this proposed mining area would be north of and adjacent to AmeriCole's current active mine, SMP number 37150302. And it is located north on Savannah Road, about one mile north of the intersection of Savannah Road and Union Valley Road. And they are giving us notification, which the law requires that they do. The county really does not have regulatory authority over the project that they are required to make us aware of it. So we'll enter this letter into the record. It was signed by Alicia Schaefer, project manager for Apex Companies. Dan or Chris, any comments or concerns? Hearing none, could I please have a motion for us to accept this document?
Oh, my dear.
I'll second.
Thank you both, and if there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Commissioner reports and comments. I believe I get to go first today. Just a couple of quick items. Last Thursday, both, or all three of us actually attended the VOTEX, or excuse me, the Career and Technical Centers, twice-a-year Community Advisory Board luncheon. And I'm going to defer to either Dan or Chris to talk about it. I've gone to them for years, and they are wonderful. I believe this, Mr. Sanada's been there a few times. This was your first time. So I'm going to, again, let my colleagues comment if they wish to about this gathering. Very, very worthwhile. And then I will also note that at noon today, the prison board will be holding its public meeting in this room. That meeting is open to all, and you're welcome to join us. Finally, I'll note that yesterday and tomorrow, we have continued the three Commissioners and some of our staff and representatives of Taylor Engineering, which is the county's engineer. We've continued our process of inspecting and viewing the 27 bridges that the county owns and maintains. We did nine of them back in the spring, and then yesterday, we did nine more, and tomorrow, we will conclude with the final nine bridges. And I think I sent you a copy of an email about a week ago. I hope you got it. Oh, okay. Tell you what, you're welcome to join us tomorrow if you're free.
I'll try. What's the time and where?
We're going to leave here at 8:00 a.m., and...
That's something. I'll probably have to catch up with you somewhere, but...
If you have time after the meeting, I can give you the list of where we're going. I thought I emailed you. I apologize. Please, please accept my apology, because you're very welcome.
I don't rely on emails. I usually use the phone, because people say they send me things and they don't show up.
I see. Okay.
Because they get dumped somewhere else and...
Well, if you have a free moment when we're done, we can run upstairs. I can give you the list of where we're going to go.
That's fine.
Okay. But...
I'd be there, but it depends on what else happens.
Understood. And it's given my two colleagues, and they already knew about many of these bridges. But there's a couple I think they've learned a little bit about. But the nice thing, for example, part of our tour yesterday, we were in Wilmington Township. The county owns two bridges in Wilmington Township, the Walker Mill Bridge and the Banks Cover Bridge. Of course, Mr. Kennedy, having been a township supervisor, was very familiar with both of those, both of those bridges. But we thank our friends from Taylor Engineering. They have a tremendous knowledge of each bridge, the condition it's in, the history of the bridge. So real pleased for, very appreciative of Taylor Engineering for the help they've given us on that. Mr. Finasco joined us as well, which we appreciate, Joe. Those are my comments, and let's see. Mr. Kennedy, you're next.
A couple of things. When I last, I got to tour Flowline Corporation. It was very interesting. They're backlogged in orders till 2028, 2029. Very nice young man that's running a show out there now. Very, got to know what goes on at that little... It's not even a little company anymore. It's a pretty good-sized company. Nice, nice that we did that. The other thing is, we were at Lawrence County Career and Technical Center. Got to see the kids and Diane and Lynn Rich also. What a great job they do. Their enrollment's up, and that's good to hear. That school's doing very well, and it's nice to see that. Last night, Chris and I got to spend the night at United Way, and Joe was with us, and it was very well-attended. So they did very well. Very nice event. That's it. My slowdown. I'm not slowing down, so we're doing okay. We got up this morning and got right out at the spa. We're doing okay.
Thank you, Dan, very much. Commissioner Sanada?
Sure, Dan. I just follow up with both of what you said. Lawrence County Career and Technical. I had gone to that in the past as well. They do a great job, and it's interesting that they're at record numbers for enrollment out there. And you know, what's nice about it is we all sit, we all sit together as Commissioners. We're at different tables, so we get to mingle with the students and talk about what they're doing. And these kids are very focused. We had to sign up. Males, females, and females are getting into machinery. They're getting into oil well drilling. And it just, it was good talking to these kids. It's just impressive what they're doing. And like I said, I've done a lot out over the years out there in their arts team. It goes to kind of Harrisburg. They used to win statewide awards. They go on to the nationals. And that just shows you the quality of the students we have in Lawrence County. And the kids seem to understand you can make some serious money out there if you focus on the trades, and that's something very important. So I think, and we also got to have an outstanding lunch. They cooked it. All the students did it. The one, yet one lady gave us some French onion soup. And it was perfectly cooked. And she said, "That's the first time I ever made that. I learned I didn't know what it was." So I give the school, and they've always had a good reputation as far as training chefs. This lady's going to be going on to Colerick School in Pittsburgh to hopefully work for one of the big chains in the future. So I thought that was great. Also, I'll follow up too with what you said, Commissioner Kennedy, on the Taste of the Town. I've gone to that in the past, and just amazing how many local restaurants are in there. It's a great cause for the United Way, but you know, with the food stands, you have a little taste of everything, and they always bring their A-game when they come. And so we enjoyed that. I think it was important to see so many. It was all diversity in the community, from the social services to many organizations that came out, and we were part of that, so... And last, Chairman Vogler talked about the bridge tour. I think it's very interesting, especially for me and Commissioner Kennedy, being new Commissioners. I never really had a chance to look and know which were the county bridges. We just go over them, you know? I didn't represent Wilmington Township back in the day, so be able to see that covered bridge out there, that's very historical. And I've seen the covered bridge out in the Collins Mills. We're going to be going there tomorrow. But to listen to Taylor Engineering getting the inside scoop of underneath the bridge and what's... We're very fortunate at this point. We're actually in very good shape as far as our bridges are concerned in Lawrence County. But I did notice we have two bridges that you wouldn't even realize are bridges sometimes, especially out in some of the rural areas. But we own them, and obviously, we have 27. That's our responsibility. We just, our goal is to make sure they're well taken care of, and I think this is a good learning experience we've had. So Chairman Vogler, appreciate you setting that up for us, because like I said, you think sometimes you know the things, but until you actually go out there and you talk to the Taylor Engineering staff, who's very knowledgeable about them. I didn't realize some bridges are expected once a year, some every other year, and some multiple times a year, depending on whether they're deficient or not. So, and our goal is, if it's deficient, then we have to move forward to try to replace it. So that's pretty much all I have for today.
Thank you, sir, very much. Well, we'll move on to new business. And our planning director, Amy McKinney, is with us this morning, and Amy has a couple of proposals. Vanessa, for numbering purposes, what number is the first resolution?
317.
317. Thank you. Amy, good morning.
Hi.
Hope you're well.
I am. Thank you.
Well, we're trying, but it's always a pleasure to have you here. And your first resolution deals with the Community Development Block Grant Program specifically for the townships of Union and Shenango and the borough of Elwood City that your office serves as the administrator for. So if you could talk to us about what this resolution contains, and then we can see if my colleagues have any questions.
Yeah. So every year, the county and our three OBOs get a direct, they get an allocation from DCEB, the Department of Community Development, out of Harrisburg. The county is responsible for submitting the application. The county is the actual person, entity that will contract with DCEB. And this resolution is required for the application. Each of our municipalities have passed the resolution, and I do have those in my hands. So this is the last step before I can hit submit for the application. So this is basically stating that Commissioner Vogler will be the one that signs off on the contract when it's approved by the state. And then it lists the activities that we are going to be applying for. We have met all the requirements that we need to meet. That would be two public hearings. The first public hearing was held at each of the municipalities. And then the second public hearing was held here at the county. We did the proper advertising. The county has, will be doing housing rehab, a street improvement project in Mahoning Township on Rich Avenue, removal of architectural barriers in Ena Valley Borough, and then our program administration that we are allowed to take. Shenango Township is going to be adding to their park out there in Shenango Township. This is the second phase that they're going to be doing with their CDBG funds, and then program administration. Union Township will be doing housing rehab and program administration. And then Elwood City will be doing both the street improvement and housing rehab along with the required program administration.
Can I stop you for just a second? Penny, this is all spelled out in the resolution. I didn't want you to have to... So the dollar figures and everything are in this resolution, so we'll have this for you. Please, continue.
No, that's all that's... I mean, in everything, the OBOs, they are the ones that chose these projects.
And what does OBO stand for?
On behalf of, yeah. So the Shenango Township, Elwood City, and Union Township all have decided that they wanted to use their funds for, all we do is administer the program, put in the application. And the admin fees come to the county because of that, so because we do the administration.
That's based on federal law, is it not?
Yes, yes.
And you've told us in the past, the city of Newcastle gets its own pot of money, and they administer their own pot of money.
The region Shenango, yeah, it's state law, and it's based off the population. So 10,000 or less, they fall under the county's contract.
Help me understand. You mentioned that we're earmarking $30,000 for quote-unquote "the removal of architectural barriers" in the borough of Ena Valley.
Yeah, so their municipal building doesn't really have the proper ADA ramp or sidewalks. So we have, we worked with our county engineer, Taylor Engineering, and Bill went down there and gave us a rough estimate of how much it would cost. And then obviously, it could be less. It could be more.
Right.
We'll be dealt with that when the time came. But we have a good estimate to submit the application. It will be putting a ramp in and then a sidewalk that is appropriate for ADA standard, so...
That's great. That building is an old-framed schoolhouse.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's a nice little building. And I'm real glad to hear that they're participating.
Yeah, they are, and Mahoning Township and Ena Valley Borough were the only two that submitted the request this year, so...
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate the work that you and your staff do from the administrative standpoint. It's a lot of work, but you folks do it well.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Let me see if Commissioner Sanada has questions. Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Well, Amy has spelled this out in great detail, and again, that's even more specific in the resolution itself. Would one of you care to make a motion for Proposed Resolution 317?
I move that we accept Resolution 317.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 318 is a resolution that would execute documents related to an agreement between the county and the Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation, also known as SPC, of which Lawrence County is a member. Mr. Kennedy is our lead representative to that board. He serves on their executive committee. But can you tell us what this particular resolution does?
Yeah, just making sure we're talking about the right one. The very last, is it 24-04J?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So 24-04J is the county's Unified Planning Work Program that we enter into with SPC, Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission, every year for a total of 15,000, but 3,015 of that is in any kind. So it's basically a grant we get from SPC. These funds are used to help us with our TIP development, transportation group of plan development, our long-range plan development, travel that, back and forth, the Penn dot line, ten meetings, our public participation panel meetings. So basically, it's a grant with SPC.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, any comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Sanada?
No.
And Amy, this is an annual thing, I believe. We move on.
It's an annual, it's the past, there have been a couple times where they've done it for like two years in a row, but this, this one, it's just going for, this is just a one-year.
And you're recommending that we act favorably?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Gentlemen, having heard that, would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both. And if there are no other concerns, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution, number 319, is also with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation. And Amy, to help you, this is contract number 24-02. That being said, can you give us some of the details, please?
Yeah, so when the county joined SPC back in 2005, I think it was, don't quote me on that exact year, but it was right around that time. Prior to that, we were our own basically metropolitan plan organization. We were our own planning partner. We did our own TIP development. So one of the, one of the things we negotiated with them is that we still wanted to maintain and do the Highway Performance Monitoring System, which is what Alan does. He goes out and you know, there's certain things that they require information that gets supplied back to them for their reporting purposes, the Penn lots, timing of lights, certain things like that. But we get paid to do that. So our office, this is again basically like a reimbursement of administrative funds for doing the work that we do, and also pays for the training that Alan attends, and then the time and effort that he puts into getting SPC all the work that he, when he compiles it all together. So it's a total of 18,750, but I think that should be a period and the takeout of zeros. Not that much more.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I know. It'd be fantastic. So it's a $15,000 grant, and we offer 3750 in any kind for a total of 18,750 dollars, so...
Well, thank you for that information, and let me see if Commissioner Sanada would have any questions.
No, it just sounds good to me. Anytime we get assistance from SPC, I'll find the answer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sanada. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for approval of Resolution 319?
I move we accept Resolution 319.
I'll second.
Thank you both. If there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Finally, I believe this is the last one from Planning, number 320. This is a resolution that would enable the Planning Office to apply to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Fund. And this would be earmarked for light removal. But Amy, I'll let you give us all the details, please.
Yeah, so this is the application that we submit on behalf of the county every year. The county is eligible for Marcellus Legacy, Marcellus Legacy Funds under their program because we had drilling in the county. So we are eligible to apply for these funds and the Marcellus Funds. And we can also apply for the real estate transfer tax, which we will. We're anticipating about, asking for about 400,000 out of the Marcellus and 200 out of the real estate. Real estate's competitive. And this is for the light removal program that we do in cooperation with the Redevelopment Authorities for demolition and housing rehabilitation. This would just be, if we were successful and receive the funds, and Commissioner Vogler, being the chair, would get the money and would sign off on the related documents.
Well, and you've had a lot of success with this program through the years.
We have. It's been fantastic, and they're a great partner to work with. So yeah, I think hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll be successful this year as well, so...
Great. We appreciate it, again, the work you and your staff and the five members of the Redevelopment Authority Board do on this. I'll see if Commissioner Kennedy has any concerns.
No.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanada?
No.
All righty, gentlemen, could I have a motion for Resolution 320?
I'll make that one.
I'll second.
Thank you. And if there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else for us, Amy?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, appreciate you joining us.
Thank you, thank you.
You take care, Amy.
You too. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have eight, or excuse me, I stand corrected, four proposed resolutions. Four is enough, isn't it?
Yes.
Artisha Foster is our tax claim director. And this is an annual thing that we go through. A judicial sale was held in April of this year. And there's always, I kind of always refer to it as kind of some cleanup work that you have to do. But let's start, Tish, with number 321. Do you have them in front of you?
I have the resolutions, but I don't have the numbers that you signed them.
Oh, well, the first one, this would be the properties that were sold for 500, and there were no proceeds to pay 2024 taxes. This is number 321.
Okay.
And there's an attached list, but can you explain this first one to us?
Well, basically, that's exactly what they are. The properties, they're to sell at the judicial sale, and they were only sold for $500. So all the delinquent taxes and all the current taxes have to be exonerated. But these resolutions are clearly just for the current 24 taxes.
And again, this was being, this was a free and clear sale, which follows, first you have the offset sale. This is the second sale.
Yes.
And it's noted, it's a free and clear sale. And as you just stated, the $500 that was successfully bid on each of these properties equals that out, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. The 500 is our cost, and that does drop into the county.
The list you've given us, and I'm not going to read it line by line, but I will note that one of the properties is in the second ward of Newcastle. Two of them are in the third ward of the city of Newcastle. Two are in the seventh ward. One is in the eighth ward. And then there is one property in Little Beaver Township, two in Mahoning Township, one in Shenango Township, one in Taylor Township, and two in Union Township. So this is our first resolution. Do you have anything else to add on the first one?
No.
Let me see if Mr. Sanada has any questions. So, Tish, now, these properties are sold, and they go on the tax rolls?
Yes.
For future?
Yes. Yes, they do.
Okay.
They were on the tax roll. They continue to stay on, if they...
But we didn't get taxed because, so we were forgiving their tax
Exactly.
for the new buyer, if you're ready.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify. I believe that, but I just want to make sure for the record. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Dan, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is Resolution 321. Would one of you care to make a motion?
I move we accept the Resolution 321.
And I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voebler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This is Resolution 322, and these are ones, Tish, that were sold over $500, but with no proceeds. Does that help you knowing which one we're referring to?
Yes.
Do you have any detail on that one?
So this is, for instance, they're sold for over $500, and we can pay either a portion or all of the delinquent taxes, but there's not enough to pay the current taxes. So we are asking to exonerate the current. And I have to apologize. I did miss on this one. It should say on your last line, "exonerated for 24," and it says 23.
Okay, let's make... Okay, let's make.
I'll make sure I, I give Vanessa an updated one.
That's fine, and I'll, on my sheet, I'll note the corrections. That's the twenty-two twenty-three should be scratched and in its place, twenty-two twenty-four. The list that you've given us, there were four properties, one in the fourth ward of the city of Newcastle, one in Mahoning Township, one in Slippery Rock Township, and one in Union Township. Um, Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions, Tish?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Sinata?
No, so just to explain, Tish, like, you're saying you made more than five hundred dollars and you paid the taxes. When you say paid the taxes.
I said paid the delinquent taxes.
To the county?
To the, yes, or to the municipality. There are, any delinquent taxes would be the county school or township.
Okay.
So if we have enough to pay all of them, then we do. If we don't have enough, then we have to exonerate them. And in this case, we did pay all, you know, most of all of the taxes. But they're exonerated through the sale. I only have to have a resolution to exonerate the current taxes.
Okay. Just trying to understand this, because.
Yeah, yeah, the, the delinquent taxes are exonerated, you know, the court order goes to court order.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the information that you sent us. The first time we've gone through this and I want to just understand and get a grasp of how that works. So we paid and we had enough money to cover the three municipalities.
Most, not all the time.
So do you break, if, if you don't have, just example, you owe a thousand dollars and you took in eight hundred. Do you break it down proportionately for the three municipalities?
So what we do is if we, if it's only eight hundred dollars, then the first five hundred goes to pay the costs, which goes to the county.
Okay.
And then the three hundred dollars would just get paid and, and our system kind of breaks it down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't have to do that. The system breaks it down.
So proportionally, much proportionate. You get the five hundred, you cover the cost, and then the rest gets distributed amongst the three municipalities.
But taxing the, or taxing wise, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, because you have a school district that's multiple.
Right.
Okay, well, I appreciate that information. So we learn something all the time. Thank you, Trish. So, uh, this is number, and I apologize. Vanessa, help me out. Are we on three, we're on three twenty-two still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're still talking about number three twenty-two. And, and I noted there were four properties, uh, included in this resolution. Gentlemen, any final questions on this proposal? If not, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make that. And I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Uh, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. This next one, the list is a little bit longer and the reason being, this is Resolution three twenty-three. Uh, these properties were listed at the free and clear sale. However, they were not sold at the free and clear sale. And, uh, the taxes on these properties will remain unpaid and the properties will then be removed from the current tax roll and put on the repository list. I hope I'm stating that correctly.
You are correct.
And what else can you add to that, uh, Tish? Anything else?
Well, the thing is, we have to exonerate all the taxes, all the delinquent taxes and all of the current taxes. Because of course there was no money or proceeds to pay them.
No bids at either of the sales, right?
No, no. So they all go under the repository list, and this is the list that you guys get monthly when people bid. We send them to the municipalities, to school districts, and of course to county, and they're approved. If all three approve, then they, the person gets to purchase it. If one doesn't approve, then it's denied. And then they pay at that time.
This list is a little bit longer, and once again, these, these properties, uh, will now be uh, added to the repository list. You'll indulge me. Uh, four of them are from the second ward of the city of Newcastle, eight are from the third ward, six are from the fourth ward, two are from the fifth ward, five are from the sixth ward, two are from the seventh ward, two are from the eighth ward. The borough of Elwood City has one property. Mahoning Township, there are four properties. Two properties in the Shenick Township, one in North Beaver Township, two in Pulaski Township, one in Shenango Township, two in Slippery Rock Township, one in Taylor Township, and six in Union Township. Once again, these will go to the repository list.
Correct.
Um, let's see. Mr. Kennedy, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sinata. Is one more, I see all the names, so these are the people that own the property.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So they didn't pay the tax on the property.
Yeah.
So now they're losing the property.
They have lost the property.
They've already lost it. Okay, so. I see, okay, that's, that's why, I'm just trying to get my hand around it. So all these people here are no longer the owner. It goes into the repository.
Yes, their name still stays on the property. Um, the county is to trustee, so we can, you know, the tax claim, I should say, is to trustee. So we can sell the properties, but we don't put the property in the county's name. It stays in the old owner's name until.
Okay, we're not the owner, but we are the trustees based on state law. Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it, Trish. Any other questions, gentlemen? Uh, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution, uh, three twenty-three, please?
I move we, uh, support Resolution three twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then finally, uh, Tish, we have, uh, Proposed Resolution three twenty-four. This was, uh, one property in Union Township. Uh, according to the resolution, the property was sold at the tax sale on April twenty-sixth of this year, and it was sold free and clear and a portion of the proceeds paid all delinquent taxes and part of the county and township taxes on, uh, four twenty-two forty-four. Please, if you have more to add to this.
Correct. So this one, we only had one this year, and it was sold for over five hundred. It paid all the delinquent taxes, but not enough to pay all of the county and the municipal tax. So what I did was I figured out how much the county should get and how much the, um, the township should get. And it's listed on your, on your list. Um, they just get a portion. So what we need for them to do then is to exonerate the balance.
Does that mean that, that, since you haven't mentioned the school district, was the school district paid in full?
No, the school dis, at a judicial sale, the school district does not get any, um, current taxes from our sale because the new owner is responsible to pay them.
I see, I see. Only the school district.
Only the school.
I see, and that, I assume that's a state regulation or a state law that dictates.
Yes, and that's because when the sale happens, the school dis, the school tax has not come out yet. Only the county and the municipal.
Yes. You're right, you're right. Those two come out early in the calendar year. Schools don't come out till mid-year.
Right, so they're responsible to pay all of the school.
Proving once again that you're on top of all of this, which.
Well, I missed this. I, I don't know how I did that, but that should also say twenty-four.
Oh, well, we can correct that.
And I look and check.
Do you see midway down, gentlemen, uh, you have the date twenty-two twenty-three. We'll make that twenty-two twenty-four. And let me see if Commissioner Sinata has any questions on this last one.
No.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Thank you. Once again, as noted, this parcel is in lo, is located in the township of Union. Uh, could I have a motion for Resolution three twenty-four, please?
I'm gonna, I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, if there are no other questions, we can ask for a, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Sure, sure.
Always so efficient. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have a great day.
You as well.
Thank you.
We don't get to see you that often.
No, I stay in the form. I stay at home.
We, thank you for the, uh, information, Travis.
Absolutely.
We're always learning these things and you were very thorough, like a teacher.
Thank you. My mom was a teacher, so, yeah.
All right. Take care, Tish. Okay, gentlemen, uh, moving along, we have, uh, and I think Mr. Vanasco can fill us in on this.
I'm catching it.
Oh, on this one, this is number three twenty-five. Uh, this would, this, this would allow the county to enter into an agreement with, how is it, how is it pronounced?
Uh, Renodes.
Could you fill us in on all the details, please?
Yeah, Renodes is formerly, uh, what we knew as the Air and Ground Corporation. Um, the Air and Ground Corporation was based out of Elwood City. Uh, they sold to a company, uh, Renodes, which I believe is in Missouri. Don't quote we own in Missouri, but it's, it's somewhere in the Midwest and, uh. Anyhow, uh, what this basically is, is they go out and get the best possible rates for us on different public utilities. Uh, at this time, we chose, uh, Renodes to provide our phone services, tele, other telecommunications services, as well as, uh, our natural gas for, for our courthouse and surrounding, uh, complexes.
So you're, you're recommending that we enter into this, uh, agreement, and if I'm reading it correctly, Joe, it's a two-year agreement?
It's a two-year, but at, at any time with a, I believe it's a ninety-day notice, we could get out or they could get out for that, my, uh, if we weren't seeing a savings.
Well, I know you've worked very hard on this matter and we do want to thank you for that. And, uh, I'll see if, uh, Mr. Kennedy has any questions. Nothing, thank you. Mr. Sinata?
No.
Alrighty, well, you've heard the recommendation of our county administrator. Would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution three twenty-five?
I move we accept Resolution three twenty-five.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution three twenty-six is a transfer that we're looking at. Uh, this would take from the commissioner's contingency four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents and transfer it to the solicitor's special counsel line item in that same amount. Um, Joe, anything else to add on this one?
No, I, I believe this came from about the, uh, union negotiations we had for ASME.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so basically, uh, Jason, the last several years, we had, you know, the outside counsel, a very limited outside counsel where, uh, with the ASME contract, we would.
Right. Thank you for that. Mr. Sinata, any questions for Joe?
No.
Uh, Dan, anything? Thank you. May I have a motion for this transfer, number three twenty-six?
I'll make it. I second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. There are no other questions. We can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next transfer, uh, ties in with some damage that we had, uh, incurred over at the Kraus Building. Uh, it was storm-related damage, and this transfer would take from the commissioner's contingency, thirty-one thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents and transfer it into maintenance and repair. And, Joe, I hope I have this right, to the next line item, commissioner's contracted services?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. Fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-four, twenty-one cents. Also earmarked for maintenance and repair. The total amount is forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And, Joe, I do have to ask this question out of my own ignorance. Um, are we, are we anticipating any insurance coverage?
Yes, we will be receiving that money back, but at the same time, we got it through the insurance company. However, timeline-wise, it's, it's a bit delayed. The contractor's had to work before the, the weather.
And also understood, so we're gonna pay them and then the insurance.
We're gonna pay them, then the insurance will actually back to them as a counter.
Makes sense to me. I think, thanks for all your work on it. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions? No. Mr. Sinata?
No.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for Resolution three twenty-seven?
I'll make that. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we can do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we have a number of, and it's that time of year as we approach the end of the year. Uh, this, this is typical. We have a number of transfer requests that I'm gonna enter into the record. Stop me as I go through them, and, and if you have any questions. Also, uh, if, uh, at the end, we can either take them all under one motion or if you need to divide them out, we can do that as well. So please bear with me. Uh, the first, uh, one, uh, involves the mental health developmental services. These are big numbers, but once again, this is typical. Uh, and Joe can attest to that in his former life, the, that towards the end of this year, we make these transfers traditionally. Uh, please bear with me. We're gonna take twenty thousand dollars from the MHDS contingency earmarked towards staff salaries. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, mental health administrative management towards mental health community services. Fifteen thousand dollars also from MH administrative management into mental health respite. Twenty-five thousand dollars from mental health administrative management into, uh, mental health outpatient. Fifty thousand dollars from mental health, I'm assuming, is this community employment?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Into mental health community participation. Forty thousand dollars from mental health administrative management into mental health housing support. A hundred and sixty thousand, uh, dollars from mental health community residential into mental health housing support. And then finally, uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from ID Services Base into, uh, EI Base. What's EI stand?
Early Intervention.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, gentlemen, don't be alarmed by this. This is a standard yearly thing that we generally do. Am I right?
Yeah, at the beginning of the, of the fiscal year, uh, generally, the, you have to, you, you develop a, a map, a budget based off of the map, where you think you might need to number. Uh, the, the dollars, however, during the course of the year, services change and, you know, and basically at this time, they come back and balance their budget. Make, make their budget right to, to one services they go in. A lot of them are minor. When I look at ID Services Base going to the EI Base, um, the population's not necessarily changing to some of the ages, so.
I appreciate that explanation. Let me see if Mr. Sinata has any questions.
I'm pretty sure I have some.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, anything? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, the, uh, uh, county coroner is asking for a nineteen-dollar transfer uh, from his contingency into that of his telephone expense line item. The county treasurer is requesting the transfer of, um, one hundred and twenty dollars from his contingency into that of his Staples line item. He's also asking for a transfer of a hundred and thirty-two dollars from his contingency into his, uh, unemployment compensation, uh, line item. And that total amount is two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Under the ARPA, uh, line items, under our ARPA contingency, this of course is the federal dollars that we received over the last, uh, couple of years. We're simply taking, uh, from the contingency, a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and transferring it into the ARPA administrative expense line item. I, I think part of the reason is that, that by the end of the calendar year, we have to have things in place, do we not?
We, we do, uh, and the actuaries recommended that we transfer this regard because of the time that people, uh, dedicated to the ARPA.
Very good, so we're following that, uh, that recommendation. Any questions, gentlemen? Once again, stop me if you need to. The maintenance office is asking for a fifteen thousand dollar transfer from their line item of minor equipment into their maintenance and repairs line item, and also a forty-five hundred dollar transfer from their Staples line item into that of maintenance and repairs. I believe that takes care of the, uh, transfer requests. Gentlemen, if there are no questions, would one of you wish to make a motion to approve all of them?
I move we accept all of them.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you both. Any final concerns? Joe, anything we missed on this? And thank, thank you for all your help on it. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinoto.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Earlier in the, uh, oh, yes, earlier in the month, um, we've had to place two proposed resolutions on the table, and today, our county solicitor attorney, Jason Mador, is with us. Jason, welcome. We appreciate, we appreciate your coming down and, uh, joining us to, uh, walk us through these. These both involve the, uh, Lawrence County Board of Assessment Appeals. And these were decisions that they made that were then, uh, taken to the Court of Common Pleas by the applicant, I believe. And, uh, the first one we'll want to talk about, by the way, that both of these were introduced and tabled. So the purpose today is to have. So, the purpose today is to have Mr. Madore give us a little bit of background on it, and then if the board is willing, we can take them off of the table for consideration. So, Jason, the first one we have would be the appeal of Stephen Boye and Stephen Warner for a parcel, or parcels, excuse me, in the Shannick Township. And when it was introduced, it was given the number 312. I'm assuming that number is consistent?
Yes.
Vanessa, okay, so we're contemplating Resolution 312, which is on the table. Procedurally, I guess, certainly glad you're here, but should we take it off the table first for your explanation? Or hear your explanation and then take it off the table? What do you recommend?
You could do it either way.
How about if we hear from you first? If you don't mind? Thank you.
The Boye and Warner property is the former Newcastle Battery building. The property owners filed a property tax assessment appeal at the board level. The board denied the appeal. They filed an appeal to the Court of Common Pleas based on appraisal that they had. During the course of the litigation, the property entered into a sales agreement. The parties agreed that the sales agreement was an arms-length transaction and it established fair market value, and all parties were willing to accept the fair market value, reduce it to assessed value, and utilize that as the new taxable assessment. The consent agreement would reflect that change. The other two taxing bodies have already approved.
And we're looking at parcel, the total assessed value based on this resolution now. We have it listed at 1.127,700, $1,127,700.
Correct.
This, again, is based upon the agreement that was reached at the court level.
Yes.
Amongst the applicants and the taxing bodies.
Correct.
Thank you.
And taxing bodies would be us, the Shannick Township, and the Shannick Township's board.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your noting the fact that the other two taxing bodies have approved this.
Yes.
Thank you. So, that being said, let me see if Commissioner Sanada has questions. Mr. Kennedy, anything? So, our next step would be to remove it, take it off the table, and then vote on it.
Yes.
Okay. That being said, anything else, though, you need to add on this one? Thank you, Jason. May I have a motion then to take Resolution 312 off of the table, please?
I move we take Resolution 312 off the table. I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will note, and Debbie, the resolution does have more specific information in it as it relates to the parcel numbers and the various dollar figures included. So, you'll have this. It is now ready for us to consider, but before we do that, do you have anything else to add on this first one?
No.
Thank you. And then, before we take a motion, I just want to make sure that Chris and Dan are okay, if they have any other questions. But hearing none, may I have a motion for Resolution 312 for its approval?
I'll make that one.
I'll second. Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Debbie, when you get the packet, there's going to be the original resolution that was tabled back on October 8th, and then you'll see there's a second one. It's the same, other than the fact it's noting that we've approved it today. So, there'll be two resolutions that basically say the same thing.
Yeah, and we'll get the new one today that was just removed, and it's up, so it'll be 328.
Oh, okay, so the one we just voted on is 328, and I'll make note of that. And thank you, Vanessa. I'll mark that down on this one. So, the original resolution was 312, which you'll have, and then 328 is the one we voted on today.
We've just always done it in the past that way. We can, if you prefer that.
I mean, normally, when you table the resolution, you're tabling it with a number already assigned. It kind of would confuse it a little bit if you put, if you're transferring it from a tabled resolution to a different past resolution number.
Okay, fully against 312.
I think probably would be, you know, just for continuation sake.
No problem.
Let the record show that this began as Resolution 312. It remains as such. It was approved just now as Resolution 312.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That takes care of the first one. The second appeal is also in the Shannick Township. This is the Fleming Steel Company, and I'm assuming, counselor, that it was the same process. It went in front of the Board of Assessment Appeals. The decision that board made was not satisfactory to the applicant, who then took it to the Court of Common Pleas. Can you fill us in with the rest?
That's correct. This was based upon appraisal taken by the property owner asserting a lower taxable value. During litigation, we entered into settlement negotiations, and with the help of the county assessor, were able to establish a new assessed value that all taxing bodies would be willing to agree upon.
To your knowledge, have the other two bodies taken action on this?
I know the New Shannick Township School District has already taken action and approved. I, from my understanding, there is tax equivalent from the Shannick Township. And, you know, they've given the solicitor the authority to sign. We already have the signature on the consent agreement against the other two solicitors.
Historically, we've tried to wait until the other two taxing bodies, who are usually closer to the situation than we are. We want to see what steps they take. I'll note that the assessed value that has been agreed upon is $689,100, according to the resolution. So, this is Resolution 314. It was tabled on October 15. Before I take a motion to take it off the table, Mr. Sanada, any questions?
No.
No? Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to remove this resolution from the table?
I'll make that one. I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, it is now ready for consideration as 314. Counselor, anything else you need to add?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I take a motion, Dan, any other questions or concerns? Chris, likewise, any concerns? Gentlemen, this is Resolution 314 for us to consider for final approval. Could I have a motion?
I move we accept Resolution 314. Oh, I'll second that.
I thank you both. If there are no other comments, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Jason, as always, we thank you. Appreciate all your help. I have a few announcements to make. Commissioners will meet publicly once again, a week from today, October 29th, at 10:00 a.m. It's open to the public. I should note, it's not on here, but I should note that two weeks from today is Election Day. The courthouse is open, but the Board of Commissioners traditionally do not hold a public meeting on Election Day. And along those lines, in talking with our Director of Elections, he anticipates that we will have a Board of Elections meeting on November, what's the first Monday? Fourth? Thank you. On Monday, November 4th, the Board of Elections will meet in public. The time is tentatively 10:00 a.m. Now, that, the time could change, but he did tell me this morning that he wants for us to meet the day before the election. It will be a public meeting. It will be advertised, and we will notify the respective chairs of the two major political parties here in this county. So, the one thing that needs to be determined is the time. Tentatively 10:00 a.m. I'll also note that at noon today, the prison board will hold its monthly meeting in this room, open to the public. We have the authority or the responsibility of making appointments to a number of the authorities that the county has established through the years, and we're governed by an ordinance that stipulates that when an upcoming opening is going to occur, that we have to announce that opening at two public meetings. And I will take the time now to announce that as of December 31, 2024, there will be one opening on the Lawrence County Industrial Development Authority. There is a current incumbent holding that position. I believe it's Mr. Audia, Harold Audia. And he is eligible to apply for reappointment, but anyone else can apply. If they do apply, they can do it one of two ways. They can either come to a public meeting and express their interest in serving, or they can send us a letter. The ordinance also stipulates that we have to conduct a criminal background check on the applicant. And by the way, this is specific to authorities, not some of the other boards that we appoint. This is specific to authorities. So, I will have to make this announcement again next week of the upcoming opening. Also, for the Lawrence County Housing Authority, there are two upcoming openings that will take effect as of December 31. And similar to the last announcement, we will announce this twice. I'm doing this by memory, but two people.
Leanne.
Attorney Leanne Felina. It's not Debbie Henan? It's, oh, it's Kevin Swager from the Borough of Elwood City. Mr. Swager's the Borough Manager down in Elwood City Borough. So, those two positions, Attorney Leanne, I said Leanne, my mistake, it's Leanne Felina. And Mr. Kevin Swager are the two positions whose terms will be expiring. Again, they may both reapply if they so desire. Anyone else can apply as well. So, we'll be announcing this a week from today. Public comments. Debbie, you're our public.
Well, what are the term lengths for those two authorities, for those factions?
Boy, I.
They're four years.
Four years.
All three of them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Debbie?
Were there these assessment things for the resolutions you adopted? Are those reductions for all of them?
I believe they were.
You know what the original figures are?
Yes. And they're listed on the resolution. If I'm reading this correctly. Now, you know what? I'm going to give you the document, and I would suggest that you have Mr. Madore walk you through it. I don't believe Mr. Hardester's here today. Otherwise, I would refer you to him. But they're listed in the document, but I'd rather you review them with the solicitor, since he is more intimately involved in this matter than we were. Unless my colleagues have any comments.
I think, you know, for the public's sake, how much less in tax money is each governing body getting as a result?
Well, I'll talk to you at first about the Hoy Warner appeal. And it notes here that the compromised settlement with the property designated will have an assessed value of $1,127,700 for 2024 and beyond. And then they list the two parcel numbers. They list the market figures, which, the market figure is different, of course, from the assessed value. Let me drop down to assessed value. Parcel number 25, 161,900. The assessed total was 146,600. And for the second parcel, 25-223,400, that assessed total is $981,100. When you add the two of those, that gives you the assessment of 1.1127,700. The resolution does not list what the prior figure was. Mr. Madore would be able to provide that to you. And I believe the same is true with the Fleming Steel. Because, again, they have the market value as well as the assessed value. And it does say that the agreed-to assessed value is the 698,100, but the resolution does not indicate, unless I'm missing something. It does not seem to indicate.
698 or 678?
$698,100 for the Fleming Steel. But Mr. Madore would have the, or the Assessment Office would have the original figures. Anything else, Debbie?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Mr. Kennedy? Thank you. Mr. Sanada? Joe or Vanessa, anything we've maybe missed?
Joe.
Thank you both. We appreciate you all joining us today, and again, we will meet one week from today. May I please have an adjournment motion?
I move for adjournment. I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. He means adjourn. Debbie, I'll give you your packet. It's thicker than usual, because it's all on one, it's not two-sided, so. When I picked it up, it was, there's a lot in here, but it's usually two-sided. It's all on one side. Thank you, Debbie.